Okay, folks, we're gonna get started. Please grab a seat. Okay, this is Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here for water and wastewater services within DPW. Director Chow, I don't think introductions are necessary. We just went through that. Would you please run through your presentation? Please keep it in the five to 10 minute range. I think most of our colleagues know what they want to ask about, and then we'll go from there.
Great, thank you. Okay, for service area 670, that's basically administration of the Water and Wastewater Bureau. It's pretty self-explanatory. Basically, it supports the administration of that office. For service area six... Yeah, for service area 671, basically, that's water management. And the one thing I would stress is that the demand for water is actually on the decline. And we are actually, as you can see, in FY18, we actually dipped below 200 million gallons on a daily basis. Is somewhat comparing to historical usages, this is low. But of course, the fact that we treating less water, but that doesn't mean the fixed cost is also declined because you still had to keep the pumps moving and and energy flowing, I mean electricity flowing and so on all that. So the cost per million gallons, you can see, has increased. Service area 672, which is Water and Wastewater Consumer Service, this is basically is the customer service division that handles the water billings and and the water bills. And in essence, this team sent out 400,000-plus bills to both city residents as well as the county residents that amount to about 1.8 million people in the region that is supported by the city water bureau. Service area 673, which is wastewater management, and you will see there is an increase of $5.7 million compared to FY19. This is partially due to the IT functions and supporting the wastewater utilities. And there were some increases in terms of the hardware replacement as well as software maintenance and that we are work, we use in, in the terms of processing water, I mean wastewater treatments. 674 is surface water management, which is the strong water management. There, you can see the budget decreased by $3.5 million. But partially, that is to set aside what we call the funding that necessary to build up the reserves, so which will allow us to go to the the bond market, to beginning to leverage the bonds, the bonds to do many of our infrastructure projects. As a result, recently, we flowed $52 million in the AA bond rating from Moody's as well as Standard and Poor. So this is going forward now. We can actually go to the bond market using our strong water fees and that we collected to begin to leverage in the, in the much bigger way in terms of using just cash. Service area 675, which is engineering construction management. This is in support of our capital program, in essence, with all the older infrastructure below ground and/or above ground, such as our treatment plants and both water plants as well as wastewater plants. And it's pretty straightforward, and you can see the number of feet of wastewater collection system that we rehabilitated in FY18 and FY19 going forward. Now, many of these projects are what we call the consent decree driven. Number of them are required as part of the consent decree, whether that's on the preventive side or on the collective side, I mean the corrective side. 670... Doesn't click anymore?
That's it.
Huh? Okay, that's the last slide.
Guess they were right. Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. I guess so first, so of course, my questions are for, about water. And as you know, we not too long ago have a bill that we heard, a water, a very important water bill. And we're now eventually going to be scheduling a work session and hope to work those sessions around your schedule so you can be a part of that, Director Chow. So my questions, does DPW offer any assistance to help low-income customers with past due amounts? And if you do, how many current, how many are currently enrolled in the program?
Our, our current program is about less than 3,000 accounts enrolled.
Okay. And of course, less than 3,000 is not a very good number considering, you know, the number of people that we have in, in the city or the number of homeowners. And do you have a number of how many of those are, those customers are renters?
Thank you. I got a water. Actually, I got a choke on water. That's why. No, I don't, I don't have that, that figure. As, as we know, that number of, for example, the renters or the landlords, they don't necessarily tell us that's actually being rented out and so on all that. But to, to just circle back on your first question, when I say we have less than 3,000, 3,000 accounts that enroll in this program, based on our projection, about 43,000 accounts that, that should qualify for our assistance program. You can see this 3,000 compared to 43,000 is far cry from, from that. We are, we are working very closely with the mayor's office of human services by using their system because the folks who are already under the human services program, we pretty much believe they should be qualified for our program. So we're gonna, we should see a bigger, a big spike in, when July 1 rolls around, when we start using the new program.
And I know you also did a presentation to the Commission on Aging as well.
Correct.
To solicit help. And the last question, what steps is DPW taking to ensure that customers can easily enroll in affordable programs and if you're offering online enrollment?
Yeah, so I would say, part of the reason why we went to the new program is precisely for that reason. Because we have multiple programs, that's in other words, each individual household that wants to get these so-called water bill assistance. We had to file multiple applications. So we basically started July 1 under the HB2O program that now folks file one application. In essence, we, as a department, no longer take that application. Terry Hickey from the Mayor's Office of Human Services actually going to be administering that front-end program for us to qualify people. And we basically, as a result, we pull them into our system and start applying those credits.
Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Director and your staff. First wanted to send condolences for Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you.
Obviously, whole council and everyone sends their heartfelt condolences to her family and to you all as well. Spoke to my colleague, Councilman Reisinger, today, who's not able to join us. And what he asked me to ask was, when are we gonna have a straight answer on whether DPW will commit to not putting a pumping station on the Filbert Street Garden? And I ask because we heard about it quite a bit at taxpayer night. I know you've heard about it quite a bit as well. Young people rely on that garden. It is, Dr. Lawrence Brown called it the Wakanda of South Baltimore. It is producing vegetables for a community that is a food desert. It is creating composting, and we all want more composting. And so, when can you all commit to not placing the pumping station there? Because I can also say, having taught there, that there are multiple adjacent sites that I believe could be used for the pumping station.
Yeah, first of all, Councilman, thank you for the, your regard for the, our laws of Ms. Cunningham. I would say, you know, Filbert Garden, first of all, DPW has always been very supportive and of Filbert Garden in many ways. Our, our, our team has been working with Garden going back several years now, as when that garden first got created through the adopt-a-lot. We have several conversations with the, the Garden, the, the folks out there who works out there. I, I would say, being the, the agency head that's responsible for looking at the city as a whole, and I pure, I clearly understood their desire, and I admire the things they doing out there. Many of the things are very green, are the things that we ought to be strongly supportive. But at the same time, we do have a water system that, that needs to be looked out after as well. So I, I try to be very balanced in terms of the decision. I met with them, I basically provided them stop short of saying, here's the D. Is almost 99%, we are going to do, we as a department are going to do everything we can to, to make sure that we don't build onto the Garden. As a matter of fact, I committed to them that we are working with the real estate, actually looking for the adjacent land that we can use for our purpose. And, and we, we have, we're making great progress, but we're not quite there yet. There, there is a piece of property that's owned by the school that's currently under discussion. But I, I committed to the, to the Garden that when we able to work out the details in terms of the land, I will be dealing over, which is what they want, dealing over that piece of parcel that they currently working on or growing vegetable and other things on, so they have the permanent sort of ownership of that land. That was my commitment to them, and that commitment has not wavered. And we are actively working, trying to secure the land so we can subdivide, because what they're using is actually part of our land. So we had to subdivide that land so we can deal it over. So the real estate transaction takes a little bit of time. I know how anxious the neighborhoods are, but we want to make sure we do it right incorrectly. And like I said, I, I know, as I, as I said, I committed to protect them any way I can. At the same time, I want to be, be very thoughtful as your agency heads, looking after not only the neighborhoods, but at the same time, for the system that we are responsible as a city.
So Director, and I appreciate that, and I know that you have engaged with those folks and that you're working with them as well. But I can tell you, sitting here a few weeks ago for City Council Taxpayer Night, that, that was not the message that we heard from young people, from adults, again and again and again. It was, there's still this deep anxiety that DPW is going to take away this garden or some part of this garden, which we have all worked so very hard to create and preserve. And so, I guess, again, what I'm asking is, when can they get a straight answer on will DPW commit to not taking the Filbert Street Garden? And again, we understand from your perspective, you do have to look out for the entire city and for water treatment and everything else. But given the really proximate land that's right there, when can they get that commitment?
I'm hoping in the coming weeks. Like I said, we're working through the details. I don't think we have the exact date. I know they're looking for exact date. I, I'm not sure if you actually had the opportunity to read the letter I sent to them. In basically, the laid out is stop short of saying, here's the D. We made a lot of commitment to them, even stating that if by any kind of remote chance we had to relocate them, we will locate, relocate them on our dime in terms of there would be no financial loss to them and all that. So we can certainly share that letter with you.
I don't think they want to be relocated.
I understand that. We, we want to deal over, but at the same time, we, I gotta make sure I got the land I need in order to build the pumping station on, secure, before I deal over. I don't want to deal over only later on to find, to come back to the community and say, unfortunately, I need that land. That's why I want to be very clear about the outcome. I know what they're looking for, and we are driving towards that outcome as hard, as fast as we can. And...
Just in closing, this is a neighborhood, again, that struggles as a food desert where people have literally created this garden, maintained it, done everything we would ask them to do. I would sincerely hope that we can get a clear, straight answer from DPW on that we are not going to put a pumping station and destroy what has been a absolute community-based project. And I would hope we can get that really soon. You said in the next couple of weeks.
In the, no, I mean, it's a real estate, is working on it, and we're waiting, just like Filbert Garden.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Chow, DPW serves about 1.8 million water customers regionally. How many of these customers are, of these are customers whose business or home is located outside the city of Baltimore?
Okay, so we, we serve about 650,000 or so inside the city. The rest are outside of the city.
Do we have a, you don't have a, can you provide us, I'm not expecting you to have that with you today. Do you, can you have a breakdown by the region? How many we serve in each portion of the region?
Yeah, we, sure, we can.
Thank you. Are the customers outside of Baltimore subject to the same rate increases for the next three fiscal years that were recently approved by the BOE?
That's correct.
And what water rates do these customers pay? Do they pay the exact same rate that we pay here?
So they have, there were agreements made between the city as well as the county. So for, for example, we serve Howard County, Baltimore County, obviously, and Anarone County. And then Carroll County and Hartford County are in the form of raw water. That means they do their own treatment. Obviously, the unit cost is, is cheaper. But the, the rates that was established going back in time, that's the rate we escalating on based on our rate increases.
So they, the simple answer is that they don't pay, and if some of it predates you, and it definitely predates me, they pay. Can we have a breakdown of those rates and how, how are those rates determined? Are they determined based on the agreements that were in place? How are their rates determined?
That's based on agreement.
So... How, how old are those agreements, Director?
So, so I would say, first of all...
Let's just say for Baltimore County, how old is the agreement?
Baltimore County is 1972 agreement.
1972. And we're, so we're still in 2019 handling their water rates based off an agreement and that was created in 19, that's before my, my mom was three years old. So, Mr. Chow, if I, if I had more hands, I would give that, that response, four thumbs down. How can we, how can we change that?
Well, first of all, the 1972 agreement was a result of a court battle between the city and the county, and that was the settlement that was made. In recent years, for example, we were able to renegotiate a, a new water agreement with Howard County. You know, we start with Howard County. We actually now very close in closing out an agreement with Anarone County. Basically, modernized the rates and, and all the race schedules and so on all that, making sure the city don't end up holding the bag.
That's right.
And, and so Howard County is completed. We're working on Anarone County. And next one we're gonna go to is Hartford and Carroll County because on the wholesale, and eventually, we're gonna circle back with the, the Baltimore County, re-looking at the 1972 agreement. It's very, it's a, it's a process.
Yeah, can, can you tell me how old the other agreements are by county? Before, like Howard County, you just negotiated that one, right?
Right. So first of all, Howard County, in essence, didn't have agreement with us.
They didn't?
They didn't have an agreement with us.
We were just allowing them to set a rate?
It's a rate that was established going back in time, whatever the unit price is.
Gentleman's handshake agreement, basically.
I'm not sure how that was done.
Yeah, thank you for getting that in control.
But certainly, in they, we negotiate with them on a project-by-project basis in terms of cost sharing based on if we're building a water plant, how, what percentage of that water plant capacity is allocated to them. So we negotiate that on every single capital project. As a result, the new agreement with them. We now have a single formula that we no longer had to negotiate on a project-by-project basis, is based on their projected consumption. And then we just apply that formula across the board to every single project that we, we, we do as a cost sharing, for example.
And what about the, did anyone else have a written agreement, like Baltimore County or just Baltimore County?
I would say just pretty much Baltimore County, and then I believe Carroll County has a wholesale agreement as well as Howard, Hartford County.
So just a question, Director Chow, about the methodology about how you guys are renegotiating these agreements, and trust me, I'm grateful that you're doing it. Baltimore County would be the next largest user, user of the water, right? So why wouldn't we start with them first, especially since they are the largest and they have something that's written in stone, so to speak?
In the, in the simplest way I can put it is, is I would like to build on my success. So in other words, I want to start with Howard County that I can get an agreement in my hand, so I can use that as a protocol to continue to advance other agreement discussion. And, and I didn't want to venture into starting with the Baltimore counties from the get. That may take years and years, and we end up not having an agreement with others. That's the part of the reason why we strategized that way. So we can, when everything is settled down, we're gonna say, guess what, everybody else has an agreement with us. These are the agreement template we're using. So yours shouldn't be too far off of what we have already agreed with others.
So just a follow-up for finance. So finance, have you guys been involved in this at all, even from monetary?
Our office has not.
This is a utility enterprise.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I just, sometimes they offer advice even when it's out. And Director Chow, I would assume that the law department is helping you with these negotiations?
Certainly.
Who in the law department is assigned to, to the project?
Okay, we can, we can get the names for you.
Okay. And for Mr. Amoros, this is a, a follow-up for the Director. If we could have given to the council these agreements with the surrounding counties, that would be greatly appreciated, especially with, if the ones that have years. And...
And your first follow-up was a breakdown of customers by county?
Yes. And the first down was a break on customers by county. And also, because I know the Department of Finance loves to analyze money and loves to analyze what the city, or in this case, the water utility fund would, would be getting. Mr. Amoros, would it be possible for you guys in finance to do an analysis to see what DPW should have been receiving if that agreement that was made in 1972 for Baltimore County, for example, would have been consistently updated over time, and we wouldn't have waited, you know, almost 40, 50 years to do that?
We would defer to the utility, but we can work with them to look at what that number could be.
Director. And then, Director, can you tell me about the average Howard County water bill? The usage and the amount, is it similar to the ones in the city or?
I don't have the information offhand, but I can certainly provide you with the unit, unit pricing that, that we charging them for and the amount of water they actually draw from our system.
Thank you. Ms. Amoros, if we can make that a follow-up as well, a breakdown of the average water bill for Baltimore City customers versus the same for all the jurisdictions that use the water as well.
I think we're looking for just residential.
Yeah, well, no, residential and business. Let's do both.
Well, the only reason I say residential versus business is because we have, the data might be skewed because we have some very large industrial water customers on the port that Howard may not have.
That's just, but Baltimore County will have some similar ones. All of them, everyone, Mr. Amoros. I'm done for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Director, cybersecurity incident. When was the first time you heard from the CIO or BCIT after the incident?
I believe is on, on May 7. I mean, because I think the incident happened somewhere around 1:30 or so, May 7, that morning. And of course, I, I think my, my staff actually alerted the BSET that our email wasn't functioning, whatever it was. Subsequently, that's when we were contacted.
Were you given any guidance from the CIO or BSET how to create email addresses?
I would say that in, in, in the very early on, when this incident occurred, there was a, I call it a mayoral staff meeting, staff meeting was held, and then a suggestion about using the Gmail was suggested, and then subsequently, you know, everybody start.
Was there an offer made by the C, was there an offer made by the CIO or BSET to create those Gmail addresses for you?
No, we were doing it on our own.
Does DPW have a continuity of operations plan?
That's, we do have that for, for the water operations, yes.
Does that cover information technology? It's okay if the answer is no. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I'm, I'm, I need to go back and look at it, but I would, I would say, you know, the water system, the wastewater system was not impacted.
Right.
Meaning the treatment side of it, because it's on a completely separate computer system.
Okay. One of the things that we're gonna be asking for in the near future with the Special Cyber Security and Emergency Preparedness Committee that Council President Scott established, which me and Schleifer will be co-chairing. We're gonna talk about COOP and disaster recovery. We're gonna be talking about patch management. So I would just ask you to talk with your IT and admin folks to start to think about those things now because a very extensive line of questioning will be coming down the road for, for everyone. That's not to single DPW out.
I think, well, I'm just going, my, my, my memory, I believe the, the COOP plan, there is a city COOP plan for that purpose and, and our COOP plan for continuity purposes, really is talking about like, you know, water hazards, hurricanes and others, power outages. I, I don't believe our COOP plan actually literally touched on server and computers and so on all that.
Got it. Second question. One of the complaints we frequently get, is Mr. Raymond still here?
Jeff Raymond, or?
Yeah, is he gone?
Yeah.
Okay. One of the complaints we frequently get is when DPW does utility work, either water or sewer or even stormwater, although that's pretty rare, is... is adequate notice being provided to customers of outages. We had another example for, I think, the second or third time in a year of five hundred block of Cathedral and Mount Vernon. The specifics are irrelevant, but, uh, customers receive notice, uh, about twelve hours before the shutdown. And my understanding is that we're supposed to give seventy-two hours if it's not emergency. Emergency is totally different. Emergency, I understand if, if, there's an emergency, you gotta go in and just do the work and you don't have time to inform the customers and they're gonna figure out what's going on and that's fine. Uh, but what's the policy for, you know, standard maintenance work? I know you guys have been doing a great job of sending out those utility work notifications to us. What's the policy for the customer?
Well, first of all, uh, if we talk about internal in-house crews such as, you know, Mr. Galloway's crew, which is, is what I call the strike force, which is really handling the emergency repairs and all that. Now, when we get into the capital programs, water main replacements, sewer main rehab and, and so on and all that, that's generally done by the contractors. And there are provisions in the contract spell out the requirement in terms of notifications and so on and all that. And each time we get, I get calls for, for folks that, that, that got surprised and all that, all this information are followed back to our engineering construction. Uh, uh, because we do do a performance review, uh, evaluation on these contractors. When the, when the job is completed and all that, this will be reflective of their performance in terms of following the rules that's laid out in, in, in the contract, which could subs, uh, could potentially impact their ability to get future contract with us. But, uh, emergency work as Mr. Galloway's, generally we try to do our best, you know, go, go knock on the doors, leave a door opener if no one responded to the, to the, to the call. Uh, but at the same time, depends on the severity of the emergency. If, if the neighborhood is flooding and so on and all that, our first focus, you know, get that under control.
Lauren, Lauren, right, heads up, uh, OEC?
That's correct.
Lauren, this is not an indictment on you. Your contractors are doing an extremely poor job of notifying customers and we need that to change. I'm not sure how you would suggest doing that, but, you know, we try to keep you updated on the council when these issues come to our attention. But it happens far too frequently. And I know we have a limited number of contractors that do this type of water and sewer work in the city. So it must be repeats of the same folks that are doing this over and over. So do you have any proposals? And if you don't right now, that's fine, you can get back to us in writing. But we need some ideas for how we're gonna hold these contractors accountable because they, they really do rum ram shot over the city and it's unacceptable. Are you in agreement, Director?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, so Lauren, if you could get something back to us in writing in the next, you know, two, three weeks. Some, Jeff, you got that? All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening. Um, I have some questions related to the water billing program. How much outstanding water bill debt do residential customers of Baltimore City have?
Uh, on the annual basis, um, we, uh, I, I'm talking historically now because we no longer can do tax sale, right? In the past, uh, prior to tax sale, we're looking somewhere around thirty-plus million dollars, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two million dollars. And then through tax sale, we were, uh, after tax sale, that, that delinquency rate dropped down to somewhere around fifteen million dollars or so. So in essence, that we were able to recoup.
Does your department have a program to provide a pathway for households to pay off these, um, this debt?
Can you repeat that question, I, I didn't follow?
Does your department have a program to help households, um, plan to pay off this debt?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's part of the affordability, affordability program that we're rolling out comes starting July first under the BH2O program that provide front-end as well as the back-end support, uh, in terms of water bills. Uh, but at the same time, we also offer, um, payment plans and so on and all that. Uh, if, if someone needs, uh, for example, beyond twelve month worth of, of the, the payment plan period, uh, we generally refer them to the law department where they work with individual to come to a perhaps a longer-term, um, payment plan.
Okay, um, last year you testified that the new water billing system holds bills that are flagged that might be in error. Uh, what are the various thresholds for a bill to be held back by DPW for this?
Okay, so, um, I, we, we are currently processing about, you know, certainly prior to the ransom where attack, uh, we were able to send out ninety-five percent of the bill on time. So that means in other words, five percent or so of the bill that we basically hold back to, for various reasons, for examinations and, or whatever.
I, if that is... Um, I think what I'm looking for is more, what are the, what, what triggers holding a bill back in error? Like what, what is, what's the threshold of, you know, how far off, um, an expected number it is that, that, that's triggered to be automatically held?
Uh, I, I will have to double check, but I believe of the, the, what we call the high tolerance, which is your average bill, if your, if your bill compared to historical usages has double, more than double, the, the bills get held back and/or if your bill is less than fifty percent of your normal bill, that get held back.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. How many times, okay, that's so, so if you have a ninety-five percent rate, then five percent, so, how many? I'm trying to figure out how to get the answer to this. I'm looking for how many times did you hold back a bill last year? That would be five percent of the total number of bills that were sent out?
Yeah, the ninety-five percent is the annual average. So we have about two hundred thousand accounts, uh, in the city. So two hundred thousand per month, multiply that by twelve month, it's about two point four million bills that we send out, five percent of that.
Okay, so is that a hundred and twenty thousand bills? I think.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Out of the two point four million.
Yeah, okay. Um, how long on average did it take to resolve the water bills that were held back?
Well, that, that varies, um, because sometimes when we want to verify locally, uh, actually onsite to see if there's actually leaks, we, we schedule appointment with the homeowners to provide that kind of inspection services. Uh, or it could be simple as, uh, we, we pull the bill and says, yeah, we actually saw because we do have hourly usages charts and all that, we can actually verify. Yeah, that actually the meter is, is being, the water being consumed. Even though, for example, if someone is sleeping in the middle of the night, but yet we see the water consumption continue to stay high, the likelihood and then that, that staying high go on for multiple days, that means is suggesting to us, yeah, there's an active leak onsite behind the meter on the private property side.
Do you, do you have an average time that it takes to resolve them or a range?
I mean, we, we certainly, because the fact that we're doing monthly billing now, uh, and the window is very small, unlike in the past where we have ninety days, that the window is much bigger. We try to do it within ten days or so in order for them to not miss that monthly bill. Uh, but, but obviously if it goes beyond ten days, that bill may roll into the next month. That means the next time they receive bill, it could be two months worth. Uh, but, but the, but the actual consumption will be accurate.
And, and what mechanisms in the billing software are used to ensure that customers aren't charged a late fee if the bill was held back?
Well, there's a trigger in there for late fee purposes and, and generally when that happens, as we examined the bills and we will eliminate that, that extra charge on the one, on, on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, um, moving on, are water customer service employees split into divisions based on the location of the resident calling to complain?
Repeat that question?
So, uh, uh, like, we, we have, I'm sorry, as, as a system, you have customers in Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Anaronda County, Howard, et cetera. Um, are the customer service employees split into different divisions so that some customer service employees handle all of this subdivision, some handle this subdivision, et cetera? Or does, is there just one big pool of customer service employees that handle problems regardless of where they're coming from?
That's correct, one pool handles all.
One pool to serve them all.
You gonna ask another question?
I, I have a few more.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, I'd just like to start with a quick, uh, request. I'd like to see, um, an assessment of the cost increase that would be borne by rate payers uh, if we were to lose five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent of the forested area uh, around our reservoirs. Does that make sense? The cost, i- if we were to lose five percent of the forested area or the, the density and quality of the forest around our source water reservoirs, what would that amount to in an increased cost to treat the water coming from that? Because that would certainly degrade the quality of the source water. So I'd like to see an, an assessment of what that cost increase would look like if we were to lose five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent and so on, uh, of the forest.
I mean, obviously, that's a, that's a pretty complex question to respond to. First of all, our reservoir is fairly deep. So in other words, i- if we lose that, so you, you basically referring to when we lose the forestry and then the, the additional sediments and so on and all that get washed into the, our reservoir, basically taking up spaces, right? But it doesn't really impact the water quality because the body is so large, it, it, you know, so we always, the, the, the reservoir will always allow time for the sediment to settle. However, in the future, a sediment builds up on, at the bottom, it takes away the capacity of the reservoir itself. But there's, it doesn't impact the quality of the water coming out of the reservoir.
But it does impact the quality. I mean, if, we have to take water from the, we take water from the reservoirs even when there's high turbidity, when there's, uh, runoff from, from heavy rainstorms, right?
Again, what I'm saying is that...
Even when things haven't settled, we're taking water from there. And if water, i- if forest, if the forest area deteriorates, uh, there's gonna be even more sediment coming into the water, it's gonna be more difficult for it to set. I mean, there, I, I know that there's science behind this, I'm not making this up. I don't know what all the science is, but I know that there's a cost relationship between the forest protection of source waters and the quality of the source water and the cost to treat that water. And I wanna know how much more it's gonna cost us to treat water if we can, if we lose forests and forest density and forest quality. I wanna know that and I think that it would be irresponsible for the city not to have such a thing to rely on in order to be forward-looking about that. So that's the request that I'm making, I would like to know what an assess, I would, I would like that kind of assessment. I have a pretty straightforward question, does DPW and any of its mowing contracts allow for the use of chemicals such as Roundup?
Do we allow the use of Roundup?
Yes, this is... That's not sure, DOT allows it in their contracts, I wanna know if D O P, DPW does. Not in any of the contracts or, or any, in, in any of our mowing that we do as a city, do, uh, uh, as a department.
We just mow.
In, in any of the in-house, uh, work that's done, do, do we use Roundup or any chemicals in our, uh, mowing or anything like that?
No, we, we, we use no chemicals, we strictly mow and clean. There are no chemicals used, uh, we don't store chemicals in the facilities, we're not trained for chemicals, we do not use chemicals.
For environmental reasons or?
For environmental reasons and we, we just don't use chemicals.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking that because I think it's a story, I, I think it's a water issue, right? I mean, chemicals like that leach into our groundwater and I think that that's a, I think that's an important water consideration and I appreciate that DPW doesn't do that. DOT happens to, that's why I have to ask if you do, so I have that as a reference.
That was too right. You get another chance, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you.
Uh, in, in January twenty nineteen, uh, Director, you announced that there would be an independent review of the billing systems and the results will be made public. Uh, what's the status of that review and when can the council expect to receive a copy?
Yeah, so we're actually working on the scope, uh, the detailed scope in terms of what we expect to get that. So the RFP scope of work is actually being worked out right now.
And when, when can we anticipate, uh, the release of the report?
Okay, so I guess it sounds like it's, it's getting very close. So I, I would say sometime this summer?
What is, how would you define very close? Are we talking about?
Well, it sounds like my chief of staff saying that they have, they are ready for my final review.
Oh, for your final review?
That's how close it is.
Uh, so when do you anticipate the council would, and the public would be able to review that?
You want to review the scope of work?
The study, the study.
The study, yeah, so once, once the RP goes out there, we select the firm and then they do their study and then we'll make that final report available.
Okay, so are we talking a year, are we talking months?
Well, the, the least intent was to chunk them into tasks. So in other words, we're not looking for a grand report that covers everything. We may be selective, say, we want you to focus on this aspect first, give us the feedback and then, then we're gonna give you the second task to look at this specific area. So it's, yeah.
How many water bill customer service, uh, employees does DPW have?
How many water bills DPW?
Cut, water bill customer service employees?
Uh, CSSD is about two hundred and twenty-five people.
Two twenty-five?
Yeah, that's including the meter shop, the back office support, the billing folks and, and all that. The all-inclusive is what we call a customer support.
Okay, and can I get one more question then?
I'll come back. Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. How many erroneous bills, um, are we sending out or do we have on record?
First of all, I don't think we're sending out any erroneous bills, right? That's the intent of us holding back bills. I know that, I know the, the word erroneous being used, you know, by many. Uh, but I would say, first of all, you know, the, the fact that we went to the new billing system, the new metering system, I understand in the past, prior to my arrival, we, we have meters that's been in the system for thirty-plus years. It wasn't reading accurately. At the same time, we have not-so-good operation internally and some bills goes out. But what I'm saying, we're, right now, we're striving to send out accurate bills. Now, when someone says my bill is erroneous or is incorrect, what we do is we, first of all, we want to speak with the customers, we look at the consumptions, the fact that I said that we have hourly consumptions, that we can actually says, at this hour, this amount of water was being used. In many, many cases, as customer comes to us, says, this bill doesn't look right, I was out of town or whatever it is, um, in many cases we found out there is leaks on the property and actually showing consumptions. So I, I get it, I understand when people look at the bills, says that doesn't look right. But what I'm saying is now with our new billing system, we actually can sit down, look at factually and walk the people through. I remember incidences where customers complained about the high bill, only finding out uh, while they were out of town, their, their kids were having party at, at home and they went back home and talked to their kids and figured out, oh, yeah, that's where the water usage was being consumed. Now, would we have any bills that escape our high and low tolerance? I would say, yeah, there, there are, there are gonna be times that escape, you know, where the system that didn't catch it. But we, we, we try to do our best to be, to, to send out accurate bills because that's, that's what a responsible utility should do.
How many are, do we have on a roll then? I'm, I'm gonna believe you with that, I'm just gonna move right along if you, if you say so. So it's zero on the books, it sounds like there is zero on the books. It sounds like there is zero on the books. How many though, because I'm still getting calls of folks not getting bills, how many do you have a record of throughout the city of folks not getting a bill every month? Do we know? Do we have that number?
Yeah, we, I, I mean, that's, that's part of that 5% that we talked about earlier, right? Whether the meter, whether, whether we held back the bill because they felt the high or low tolerance, or we find there are issues with a specific bill, and therefore, because I, I would, I would say, I would credit Councilwoman Clark, because going back a few years ago, her insistence on us sending out actual consumptions, actual bills, corrected bills, we take that to heart, and then that's sometimes as a result, because the investigation may take a little bit longer, that, that, and the fact we're going on monthly, or we miss, miss that so-called, that date that's to send the bill out, you could end up with longer than monthly bills. And there are definitely incidences of those.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Councilman Slifer.
As far as water main breaks, what's the general cost differential between when our in-house crews do it versus the private contractors?
I don't have that figure offhand, but we can certainly tally it up for you. But of course, that depends on what size of the main, whether it's-
Apples and apples. I mean, same.
Again, we, we can find typical-
Do you have that info over there?
They wouldn't have that.
As far as the water mains are concerned, this year, different than previous years, it just seems, at least in my district, that the communication has been, has been off, and also just like the turnaround time of how long it's taken to get water main breaks fixed. But also, the key piece of it is the communication, because in some situations, it's just water flowing down the street. That's one piece. But when the water's off for a neighborhood, every hour makes a difference and every day makes a difference. And I'm, I'm just saying, I think we need to come up with a different, a plan of communication between the council member of that district and the updates that go into when things are going to be complete, and also when they are working on something and it's taking longer than expected, just for that information to be communicated. Because I can just tell you, I've struggled to get updates, and I've aggressively pursued them, and I show up to just about every water main break that happens in my district, and getting updates has, has been pretty time-consuming. I appreciate, you know, your responsiveness when, when we reach out to you, but the idea is that it doesn't have to get escalated to the director to find out, you know, what the game plan is to get a water main break fixed. The other question I have-
So was that a question statement?
Well-
Because it sounded like it was a question.
No, that wasn't a question. My first question didn't get an answer, so that doesn't count. But-
Okay, so-
And then my statement was in reference to that question. But the second, the, the second question I have, and hopefully there's an answer to this one. If not, I'm still at zero questions, is what is the game plan?
You about to have a water main break in your district.
What, what is the game plan to work through all the backlog of billing and other issues once we go back online? Because as it is, it takes, it takes way too long to get resolution on an issue. And so now we're going to be faced, at this point, a month of backlogs. By the time it's up and running, who knows, because we haven't heard from BCIT yet, but we could be in this for many more months. And so you guys are going to have an influx of bills that need to be resolved. So what is the game plan to resolve them in a timely manner?
Well, this, this is the question that we've been wrestling with internally, recognizing now our, our billing system has been down since May 7th, and, 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 and the same time, looking at from a timing perspective, now is at the beginning of June. In about another three weeks or so, we get into July 1st. That's where the, the first water rate increases is going to kick in. Right? So we have more to two of issues we're going to have to work through, and we recognize that there will be likely a, a, a big spike in terms of when we do come back online, in terms of customer inquiries and so on and all that. That's something that we, matter of fact, we were talking about it yesterday, internally, looking at resources and, and getting staff prepared for all that. We, we know it's going to be fairly tough. We, but we will work it, work through the, the issue.
I mean, I, I think there needs to be a little more concrete of a game plan, especially if the systems come back online during the summer and people are going on vacations and other things. I mean, we're going to need all hands on deck. So perhaps a suggestion, since there is no plan yet, would be to take other personnel from the office as well as, you know, other offices that we can perhaps train people on the common inquiries that we get, so that there's more hands on deck for the day that it does come back online.
Yeah, first of all, when we talk about the, the customer service center, you know, where people, whether it's, they are on the phone, whether they are on the, making bill corrections and all that, what I'm saying is that number of people are cross-trained. And it is our strategy to deploy, reallocate resources based on where the needs are. And then at the same time, we never would, we wouldn't take the, the possibility off the table where we extend longer hours to provide that kind of assistance to the customer. I'm saying those are things that we have done in the past and, and deployed it to handle crisis spikes or anything like that. So we do have strategy. We do have ideas about how we're going to handle this. And we're certainly going to try to prepare. We already putting, we will be putting our, our folks on notices in terms of when the system come back online. We're going to certainly looking for overtimes and, and perhaps even for seven-day operation. We had done that in the past, just because we need to handle the spikes. So, yeah.
Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. Chow, during the conversion of, thank, thank you for your, being here. Thanks for your work. During the conversion from quarterly to monthly billing, something happened which I, I, now I know what it is, that caused a big spike in infrastructure, in the infrastructure category of bills. I, I, and what it is, is that when that conversion was made from, from quarterly to monthly, if there were a, the whole infrastructure item in the bill is about the size of your meter. How big is your meter? And in two cases in my neighborhoods, what happened was two developments, one being Stadium Place, which is 400 elderly people in, that, in, that, that are living in high, in high-rises, that were, that are on the land that, where the Memorial Stadium was. The other's a homeowners' association with one meter feeding into 104 homes. What happened was, if your meter was not, if you had a larger meter than your bill would indicate, than your monthly bill would indicate, it was, it was, it was transferred into the larger, the rate went up to the larger meter size.
Correct.
Now, in, in one case that I know more about in my district, there was historically an agreement that if you're going to bring in residential into what was a large baseball, football stadium site, then we, the city, are going to leave our meter here, but we will make an agreement with you, the nonprofit, that just, that's coming into this property, that we, the non, we will make an agreement that you will pay a lesser rate than the meter would indicate. Well, that was in a letter that no one can find. But it's part of the oral history of what happened there. And now, this nonprofit is, I think they owe half a million dollars at this point, that they can't pay to the city, and they don't know how they're going to pay it. So I, I mention all this only because I'd like to have some kind of information about how these changes were handled. I'm not, I mean, I think there's a history. Now, the other one is a homeowners' association, and they don't-
Councilwoman Clark, can, can we give Director Chow an opportunity to respond to the first one?
Oh, I'm not going to ask you to solve these constituent problems. I'm, I'm just saying, thank you for moving me along here. Not now, but, but I'm saying that this has happened, and it must have happened in a number of cases. And some of those cases, the, the opinion is that everybody was cheating on somehow, not your opinion, not the agencies, but just kind of the take is, oh, everybody was getting away with something all these years, and we changed it. But nobody was informed in advance that their rates were going to go crazy, and why? So it took a while to figure out why, what's going on here. So I, I'd like to get at the root of the problem and say, could we have a look at where those changes were made in the system, where, where these changes were made and what locations, and, and what the rationale was for making those changes in those locations when the-
Let me try to respond that.
So Director Chow, are you, are you clear about what Councilwoman Clark is asking?
Yeah.
And so, how, how soon do you want the response from Director Chow related to-
Well, as soon as he can do it. It's not, I mean-
Okay.
I can verbalize it now if you want.
No.
I don't know how long it's going to-
I want it, we want it in writing in two weeks.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, so we're coming back through. Councilman Henry, do you have, are you good? All right.
Mr. Chair, I have remaining questions that I'm going to ask, be submitted in writing.
You're going to submit in writing. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Dorsey, one question, and then Councilman Burnett.
Oh, help yourself.
I just kind of have a general inquiry about wastewater, water and wastewater infrastructure, because again, today, a couple days ago, I got a complaint from a constituent who has a sinkhole in front of her house, where I just generally tend to think that these, that small, that sinkholes in the city streets, when they're right where there's water and wastewater infrastructure, have to be the result of some failure of the water and wastewater infrastructure that's causing some sort of erosion in the roadway, you know, in the roadbed. And this is one of like many cases, it seems, where I've had a, a problem that I've asked to have addressed, and it's been addressed in a substandard fashion, where, you know, some stuff got dumped into the hole, and then it got some asphalt thrown on top of it, or even just some asphalt got thrown on top of it without anything going in the hole, and the asphalt just fell through basically as soon as the truck drove away. This kind of stuff seems to happen with some regularity. And I don't understand, if somebody's calling in 311 and saying there's a hole in the street, and DOT goes out there and responds, you know, what's, and, and I, I just don't understand this process by which something like that can happen. Like, if there's a sinkhole in the street, it has to be assumed that there's something that caused it, and some excavation is going to have to take place. How is it that we end up with sinkholes that don't get addressed as something for which there's a cause, and where some solution is implemented, and then six months later, it's still a sinkhole there?
Yeah, so when we get a report of, of a sinkhole, and generally, you know, that's where our utility maintenance inspector will go out.
Bless you.
Our inspector will go out, they, they will inspect, one, based on our UVIEW, utility viewer, to see if there is actually water lines or sewer lines or stormwater line near where the sinkhole is. And I'm just speaking from a process perspective. And if indeed there is a water line there, or sewer line there, or stormwater line there, we'll deploy, what we call it, you know, in the case of water, we'll deploy leak detection to see if there is active leakage going on, on the ground, which is eroding the soil away. In the case of sewer man, for example, we may deploy a closed-circuit television, CCTV inspection of the sewer line to make sure the sewer line is actually intact, there isn't a crack pipe and/or a separate joint or whatever. So there are some investigation that goes in there, right? So-
But that's not, but, but some, that, that process seems to break down awfully frequently. I mean, I, I know two winters ago, right, I mean, there was a place where I had brought it to the attention of DPW on four different occasions, and it had had asphalt thrown on top of it on four different occasions. And this is not where it's just somebody putting in through 311 and saying there's a hole in the street, and DOT absentmindedly just throws some asphalt on it. This is where I brought it directly to DPW leadership, and it got asphalt thrown on top of it, and repeatedly, and continued to open up, eventually to find only when it was an enormous problem that, oh, yeah, there's obviously two storm drains, both right here fully collapsed. So these investigations are not being prompted, you know, these, the, the necessary assessment is not being automatically prompted in a reliable fashion. And so I, it seems to me there's got to be some breakdown in training with, you know, anybody who could potentially be putting their hands on this, whether that's 3, 311 operators, or people reading 311 app requests, you know, I could foresee that people like put in a pot, a pothole request, but actually it's a sinkhole, or whether it's DOT going out and responding to it as if it were a pothole, but just, and treating it as such, even though it's actually a sinkhole. Where's the training mechanism for like every, anybody who could potentially have their hands on this to be able to properly assess things and properly initiate these kind of assessments?
Well, first of all, my inspectors or investigator is properly trained to do this kind of analysis. What you're describing is a failure of them performing their work, right? In those incidences, by all means, let us know, let the management know, and then we will, and obviously, I, I can tell you here and tell you says, yeah, we did this personnel action on certain individual, because these are personnel actions. But what I'm saying is that in those incidences, if we are made aware someone is purposely avoiding doing what they're supposed to be doing, there is responsibility on the management side to do what we need to do in terms of taking corrective actions as such.
I, I probably have some requests related to this, but I can't pinpoint it right now. And so I'm going to plan to take that directly to Jeff Amoros and to you and to-
That's fine.
And make the rest of the committee chairmanship aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will, I'll just, for the sake of time, just will have a request. I know that there are no erroneous bills going out, but we do know that there are complaints coming in about the bills. So if we could have the- Uh, so if we could have the council provided a report of the following, and I don't know, Jeff, are you ready?
Sorry?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, Councilwoman. All right, how many complaints does the department successfully process and resolve per year? How many complaints go unresolved? How did your department record this information? And what reports on water bill customer dispute software can this, sorry? Would, if you have software to analyze these reports, uh, what, what types of things can it put out as far as publicly, public facing data on this so that we can be more transparent about what's happening?
Councilman, you're referring specifically to water billing complaints?
Water bill disputes.
Disputes, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, a couple, these are all quick. We don't have a 311 service category request for sinkhole, correct?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I mean, we can check.
Okay. There is not, there is not something in the, the 311 app that is for sinkhole. Okay. My suggestion would be that we should have a 311 service request category for sinkhole, which would trigger a deployment of someone from DOT and DPW at the same time. Oftentimes when we report sinkholes, constituents don't know what they are, as, as even council members don't. And DOT comes out and says, oh, there's a water-related issue, sewer, storm, or, or just water. And sometimes folks think the opposite. And that ends up resulting in two, three, four days before the city comes out to even inspect and take action, at which time more damage is done, which increases costs to the city. Can we explore with your counterparts at DOT? First, that would require BCIT creating a category. And, but Jeff, can you put that down as a request? Some type of written response on a, a sinkhole category and deploying DOT and DPW at the same time. Uh, the second thing is, um, Director Chow, uh, the, the water rate study and a couple of quickfire questions on, on terminology in there. Can you explain what the rate stabilization fund is, what the purpose of it and who it's governed by?
So the rate stabilization fund is purposely set aside to meet the, what I call it, the bond council's requirement because when we flow bonds, we got to make sure there's requirement that the, the bond buyers, that they want to make sure the city has sufficient-
Right.
-capital that, for that, is for that stabilizing, for, for that purpose.
So that's basically a reserve fund to satisfy bondholders?
Right.
Got it. And then the operating reserve requirement fund, same questions?
So that's same thing. Uh, so they're asking us basically, say, we got to set aside X number of days of actual operational cost aside as a, as in reserve for that, for that as well.
Okay.
There's multiple requirements as when you flow bonds.
And then the additional operating reserve fund, what's that? Or that's a separate line item?
Yeah, pretty much same thing.
Okay.
So, so in this case, like, we, we have not been able to send out any bills since May 7.
Director, can you give that gentleman the mic? And I'm sorry, I don't know that we've met. Oh, you don't have to get it, well.
Good evening, Troy Brogdon, CFO.
Oh, Troy, we've met.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, I haven't seen you in a while, thank you. Um, okay, so let's, let's start from the top. Rate stabilization fund, that's to satisfy bondholders?
Correct. In times when we are unable to meet the, uh, bond covenant, we would reach back for that, but-
Okay, that's, so that would be if we can't cover our debt service?
Correct.
Got it. Second, operating reserve requirement fund?
Yes, and that should be, I think, uh, 3% of the operating expenses. But we actually have two operating reserves, but both of them should cover us to make, meet a 90-day cash deficit.
Why are they in two different funds?
It, it's just the way it's structured, but, um, it, it just adds some extra security for us.
Okay, who dictates how that's structured, is that-
Uh, Treasury.
Daniel, can you answer that question, why, not that it matters, I mean, there's-
Well, I would say finance, uh, Henry Raymond, Steve Kraus, so Treasury falls under them.
Yeah. Do you have any insight into that, Daniel? If not, it's okay?
No, we can get that as a follow-up, though.
Okay. I mean, it, it doesn't really matter because if one of them has to be 3% and the other has to be 1%, and the total is four, it doesn't really matter how many buckets you split it up into. The bottom line is it's got to be 4% in total. So you could split it up into four 1% buckets, one 3 and one 1, two 2s.
And to add one more, that's the residual fund.
Yes, so then, so there's the additional operating reserve fund, which is similar to the one I just asked you about, and then there's the residual fund, what is that?
That's, um, at the end of it, you could really look at it as the fund balance. So-
Okay.
Right, so when, when you don't, those are restricted and a residual fund is kind of, I call it the unreserved fund balance.
And that's similar to how fund balance for the city works?
Correct.
You either, you, your only option is to make future assignments to it, correct?
We're not in the business of making a profit, but the, the money that remains would go there to the fund balance.
Okay, and then you make future capital assignments with those dollars?
We do, we can use PEGO for that or, um, some other options.
What do we normally have in the residual fund?
Yes, we do.
No, or, what amount do we normally have in the residual fund?
Um, I have to look at my notes, but it's, it varies, but it is, it's constant.
Yeah, can you grab your notes?
Sure.
Please. And then I guess Director Chow, the, the last question on this is, how much money does the department have set aside in total for all water affordability programs for each of the next five fiscal years?
So, uh, we have, our projection for the 43,000 accounts, should all of them satisfy and stepped up says we need affordability support, will amount to somewhere around $20 million or so.
Per year or over five years?
Per year, per year.
Okay, so that'd be a-
And what we, what we did was, we know currently it's around 3,000, so for budget purposes, we're projecting that, you know, in the coming years, we'll escalate that up to the 50%. So we set aside about $10 million for affordability program.
So we think that there's, we know that we have 3,000 people signed up. We think we could have as many as 43,000 customers signed up. But we're not, we're not automatically opting them in, correct? They've got to sign up.
Well, that's part, part of the discussion we have in with Mayor's Office Human Services because their, their database clearly is lot bigger than 3,000.
Sure.
So we essence says, if they qualify for that, they should be able to qualify for this. So we will see a big jump from the current 3,000 to something equivalent to what Human Services has.
So our projection is that there are 43,000 households. Many of those aren't homeowners. So we reasonably expect we could get somewhere in the middle, say, 20,000, 21,000 plus or minus households and that would be an approximate cost of 10 million per year as we scale up, right?
No, we, we just basically projecting with us aggressively pushing this thing out, we believe we, we are projecting that, and very hopeful that we'll get the enrollment to up near around 20,000 or so, which would take about $10 million.
Right, and, and you're just going to scale up the, the enrollment each year?
That's correct.
Okay. So the total cost over five years, even though you, you can't nor should you be expected to based on, on that methodology, is, uh, 10 million divided by 6, 1.8, is, is somewhere in between 1.8 million per year, which is 3,000 customers.
Talking about $10 million a year.
I, oh no, I got you, I'm, I'm just trying to work the math real quick.
Okay.
$10 million a year is 20,000 customers, right? 3,000 customers would be approximately 1.8.
Yeah, we spend about 1 plus 1.2 million dollars or so right now.
Right, so we're going to scale up some, 1.2 XYZ and 10 million projected over that five-year period. So the total cost, I guess the answer to the question is plus or minus 25 million over five years, right? Did I get the math right?
Well, let me, let me answer this, what, we have set aside $10 million a year.
Set aside the 50.
Set aside $50 million.
Okay. But we could reasonably expect that we would only expend, or we would only-
Right, so if we don't-
Negative 25 million on the balance sheet.
Right, so in other words, when we did our budget projection, like for, for example, this, this three-year bundle rate increases, we're basically projecting 10 million, so it's $30 million, right? So when we do the next assessment, we're going to say, well, did we actually spend the 10 million? If we spend less than $10 million, we may be able to reallocate that money for future reduced rate, rate increases that, but if we expand more than $10 million, then we had to set aside more in the future years.
Got it.
It's, it's fluid.
Okay, so there's not, there's, that was, may not have been the best way to state the question, but the bottom line is, it's 10 million per year, it's 30 million set aside as part of the last rate increase, which was July 1 of, uh, 18.
No, July 1, 19, this year going forward, three years. The new rate increases start July 1st this year.
I thought the three-year deal, though, was completed in 18.
No, the, the new water rate increases that was approved in January is for the-
Oh, that was this Jan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind here. So 19, 20, and 21, we've got 30 million set aside and then effective July 1 of-
Actually, it's 20, 21, 22.
20, 21, 22.
We're going to be going into fiscal year 20.
Yeah, I'm using calendar years, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, got it.
July 1 of 19, 20, and 21, we have a total of 30 million set aside for fiscal years 20 through 22. The expectation is that in July, by July 1 of 2023, when we have our next set of rate changes, that we will reassess based on-
That's correct.
-how much of that 30 million. So it could result in a rate decrease, it could result in it staying the same, it could result in an increase, but a lot of that will be ba, or some portion of that will be based on how much of the 30 million. Got, okay, all right, I understand, thank you. Schleifer?
Yeah, so, um-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Schleifer, Councilman, did we find out how much is in that last one?
Yes, so for the, uh, for the, for the water fund, the residual, uh, fund balance for 20 will be, uh, 20 million. For wastewater, 30 million, and for the stormwater, it, it will be 11.
All right, and we're collecting, we're using some type of banking mechanism to collect interest on that money?
Correct, Treasury does, uh, overnight deposit, um, pretty much a sweep.
What's our rate of return on that?
It tracks pretty closely with the, the rate set by the Fed, I think it's around 2%.
2% return on?
For, for the short term, because we have to be liquid, so they invest in very short-term bonds.
Okay.
Like overnight annuities.
But we're, we're seeing 2% a year on that?
It might be a little bit higher than that, but- It's a nominal amount, the general fund we collect, I think it's around $12 million.
But that, it sounds like it accounts for just the water with 20 million, that's 2%, it's 400,000 a year, right?
I believe so.
Am I not crazy, like the math is correct?
I, I would assume that they treat it, they treat it like ours, it just treats it as revenue.
So between the water and the wastewater, we're, we are collecting about a million dollars a year in interest on that?
Right.
Between 50, 2% and 50 mil, okay.
But obviously, you know, we, we count as those as a revenue, right? So when we do rate projections, we take all those into consideration-
Sure.
-in terms of the needs versus the revenue.
Not a bad thing, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to understand. Councilman Schleifer?
Yeah, so on that, um, what would, what would you guys do if the bill ends up being that everyone's opted in and it hits the full peak every single year, started from scratch? So where does that money come from?
We will squeeze out of the operating dollars. In other words, we have projected this, the, the rate increase is already locked in for the next three years. So should we spend more than $10 million? If so, the utility is going to have to absorb that, 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 in other words, are going to be cutting programs to meet that requirement.
So what kind of programs? Are you talking about like infrastructure improvements or are you talking about?
It could be a variety of things.
Can you give us a couple of examples?
For example, I may say, uh, slow down in terms of hiring, right? To, 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 to hold back some money. Or I can defer some capital, uh, projects that might not have a, a immediate impact and defer for a year just to buy us some time. So the variety of operational as capital programs, because I don't want, we already made the promise, we're going to, you know, for our purpose, we budgeted for 10 million, but we recognize if it goes more than $10 million, the, the utility operations will have to absorb that impact and we are prepared to do that.
So on the short term, you're saying you would just cut programs and cut, um, infrastructure improvements, but what about in the-
I would say defer those programs.
All right, so what happens, uh, long-term, like after the three years? If you're seeing that it's doubling what you projected because it's an automatic opt-in, what, what do you guys then do in three years from now?
So, so for example, uh, next three years, we budget for 10 million. Like you said, day one, we hit $20 million. So that means when we come back at the fourth year for the next three-year rate increases, we'll set aside $20 million to satisfy that need and then we'll, we'll look at the total operational needs as well as capital needs, whether we decided to, uh, to recover that additional $10 million in future year in the form of rate increases or defer maintenance. I mean, those are decisions we need to, we need to make at comes that time.
Got you, so you're saying that if it goes over budget, then in three years from now, when you set the future rate increases, that that may play a role in it, you'd have to come up with that remaining $30 million, you're saying?
No, I wouldn't go back to say I want to recover the $30 million, that's-
But moving forward, you'd project accordingly. So, so you're saying the rates could increase by an additional $30 million overall, moving forward, when you project that three years?
Or we reduce our operating dollars or capital dollars by equivalent of $30 million. That's an option.
Got you, well, I think, uh, the water bills are already high enough, I'm not sure we can absorb any more, um, increases, but on to a different topic. Uh, what's the ballpark cost to put in a storm drain where one does not exist?
Kim Grove, come on up. So you're talking about basically the, the cost to install a storm drain?
Yep.
Good evening, Kim Grove with Department of Public Works, Office of Compliance and Laboratories. So that cost would vary depending on what the size of the pipe would need to be and the length that you would be connecting with it. We have done evaluations, though, of the full replacement of the entire storm drain system, which is parallel to the wastewater and the water system, that's on the order of about $5 billion.
So I'm not talking about that. What I'm asking is that if you go down a street, let's say we walk right outside here and on Fayette Street, there's, um, three storm drains and we determine that, you know, a fourth is necessary, how much would it cost ballpark to, to include one more?
So you want an inlet?
Yeah.
And then you want the pipe to go with it?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to say it's about, it's between $3,000 and $10,000.
Yeah, it's about three, it's between $3,000 to $10,000 and then the cost of how outer long the pipe is to connect to the system.
Okay, and how many of those would you say you guys do a year, ballpark?
Um, we've, to my knowledge, there's not been a lot of additions. Uh, we have over 53,000 inlets already in our system.
Right.
Okay, there have been replacements of the grates and frames.
But I'm talking about new ones.
There's not that many.
We're not adding any new ones, I mean, we're replacing old ones.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, due to redevelopment of the community or something like that.
Yeah, but we don't normally go in there, add inlets because the key is this, the pipe is the capacity constraint. You can add 10 inlets or go up to 20 inlets, the constraint is how much flow you can get through the pipe. You can keep adding the inlet, but if the pipe is flowing full, you know-
I got that, I mean, in most, in most situations, I mean, the water ends up, ends up somewhere. So the question is if it ends up in people's basement or if it ends up going, uh, into our, uh, into our systems. So for something that would be as inexpensive, uh, $3,000 to $10,000 per, uh, why isn't there a, you know, an annual amount set, set towards taking, there's certain streets that we know could desperately use, um, an inlet that where one does not exist or that, you know, in the middle of the block, there's no inlet and the grading is at a point where all the water condenses in the middle and then there's no drain right there, no inlet there. And then it ends up turning into ice patches in the winter and also then ends up flooding people's homes in the summer.
I understand, it's, I, I'm just saying that, uh, a, a, a proper hydraulic analysis in terms of capacity needs to be done. When you're talking about a depression in the- When you're talking about a depression in the roadway where rainwater accumulates and doesn't flow or drains, follow the contour to the, to the inlets and so on and all that, now that could be a paving pitching issue, that's a DOT issue, if the, if the paving, instead of pitching this way, is pitching this way, it's going to accumulate water. So I'm just saying that, but from a hydraulic perspective, I, I just want to say, solving a local problem, the water may disappear, but it may cause downstream hydraulic surcharge. That's what I'm saying, needs to be properly analyzed.
That's a case-by-case basis, but I mean, certainly, I can tell you, I've felt the pain of being that pinball, being hit between DPW and DOT as to who should solve a problem. And so what I would say is that we have spent, I'm sure, across the city, and I'm just guessing, many, many millions of dollars over the years on regrading and shifting and doing all this stuff, in cases where we could have just put an additional inlet in that troubled spot, and that would resolve that issue.
I'm just saying that the, the answer is not that simple.
I'm aware that it's not that simple, but the fact that we're not doing any of them, what that tells me is that even in situations where there still is capacity in the system, the fact that we are not exploring it and not keeping that tool in the toolkit, and it's not included in the annual year-over-year budget, means that we're spending a lot of extra money in certain situations to solve a problem that can be solved by adding an additional inlet to a street.
Well, first of all, we don't automatically go in to add inlets, but we do automatically look at the pitch of the pavement, and then very often, we've determined the paving contractor didn't pitch the pavement properly, we refer that back to DOT. So what I'm saying is that adding a drain in there is, is a bandage.
Right, so I'm just telling you, so DOT, and I wish they were sitting here. What they would be saying was that, you know, unfortunately, there's no, there's no inlet here where there needs to be one, so let's refer you to DPW, who handles inlets, to get an inlet put there. So I'm just telling you, that's the debate back and forth, and so what I would, what I would recommend to the administration is to take this cost-saving mechanism and make sure that it's a priority citywide, that in locations, to make this one of the tools in the toolkit, and I think that it should be equal to, similar to our paving program, where each council person can, you know, submit a list of paving priority spots in their district, that we also get a certain amount of inlets per year, where you guys can explore it, and when you guys deem that there is capacity there, that you will then grant that, that wish of putting inlets where inlets are needed. Is that a problem?
That's fine.
Thank you.
I, I don't want, well-
We got it. We got it. Director, so when the, when the water billing system comes back online, what happens if we've lost a portion of the bills?
Well, first of all, we have not lost any revenue, right? We're just not able to collect them right now. So in other words, the meters itself, sitting at each individual residence, the meters continue to register and capture and store the reads.
And that leads to my second question. How much data can those meters hold?
How much data, what?
How much data can they hold? How many days of data can they-
About 40 days or so.
So after 40 days?
It would turn over.
Right, so after 40 days, what happens on the 80th day? We've lost the first cycle of billing.
Well, in other words, is in the 40 days, you're basically losing the first day, so the new one, new day comes on.
Right.
So you're always holding the 40-day reads.
So if we go 80 days, we lose an entire billing period?
Right, but the thing is this, though, even though we lose so-called, the, what is stored is the hourly consumption and so on and all that.
Right.
However, the meter itself is registering the end read. So in other words, even though I lose the 40 days hourly reads, but my, I know what my initial read of that meter was, and let's just say 60 days later, I know what that 60-day read is, subtracting it to two, that's the total consumption. That's what we will be billing people for.
So you're confident that we're not going to lose any revenue, no matter how long this goes on?
Yeah, it's just that the people's bill is going to get bigger and, and all that, but we're not going to lose any, in other words, not, after 40 days, the meter won't stop working. It will continue to register.
Okay. No, I certainly hope you're right, and take you at your word on that. Has B sit offered any assistance to ensure or inspire you with confidence that we're not going to lose any of that data, or that everything's going to be okay with the water billing, once we come back online?
Well, I would say, you know, it's for a number of days and weeks now that my team, my IT folks are actually working with the B set, along with their contractors. We're pretty confident all the, the so-called the billing data is intact, and they go through testing. The water billing is a high priority as a, from a city perspective. I believe the financial system is number one priority, billing system right after it, and we are, we, my understanding, talking to Mr. Johnson and others, his team, as well as my IT folks, they, we are getting very close. Now, once the B says, everything looks good, we can release it, we'll take that, we'll get that system back, and then we'll work with our contractor, because we want our contractor going to their database to make sure there's no bugs in there, and then after that, we'll go live afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions? We're in recess till 9:00 AM tomorrow. Director and the entire DPW team, thank you for everything you're doing, and thank you for staying with us.
And Mr. Director and to the entire TPW family, we just want to offer our condolences for the life loss, and know that the entire family has TPW and the family of the employee has us. We have all in our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director.